We're going to go ahead and call these to our to have four present and have been there in the room right We apologize for being a little bit late. We've been at a disadvantage today because we had no electricity, no wifi in the building because of the storm. So we must take technical difficulties we've had on time to look and find stuff. So Mr. Peterson, do you offer? Want to ask you please?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Mr. Cox do it for us today. Dear good father, thank you for this day and the rain that you've sent us today. And Laura, I thank you for providing us with the opportunity to serve this district as well as the community. Laura asks that you just give us the knowledge and the wisdom that we need to overcome the obstacles and the challenges that we'll face and and help us make the decisions that's best for these kids in our school. Laura asks that you just surround this district and keep us safe and free from any harm. In Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, I think you have some special guests who are...
I certainly did. I've got Ryland Barefoot. She will come to the front, please. Go on now. Our Ryland's parents, Jonathan and Michaela Barefoot. And Ryland is a fifth grade student at Caddo Grove. She's a student that loves to read and care for animals that live on her family's property. She proudly serves as Caddo Grove Student Council Vice President, and she's currently enjoying reading the Dragon Girl series. Ryland is a great role model for younger sister Reagan. She's also a student who's very creative and leads with integrity. She is described as being determined, clear, and welcoming to any challenge that will grow who she is as Joshua L. Come on, Ryland Barefoot. Our next student is Sergio Venegas. Sergio, come on down. His parents are Hugo and Martha Venegas. Sergio's also in fifth grade at Caddo Grove Elementary. Sergio is a big brother to Mateo Venegas. Sergio's interests include baseball and hunting. He is someone who loves to explore outdoors and enjoys caring for animals on a family's property. He currently serves as Caddo Grove Student Council President. He is described by his teachers and families as always being kind, a strong leader who is always willing to help others. Also, he just participated in the middle school madness baseball tournament this weekend. As a first baseman, he's supported his team in bringing home a big head victory. Sergio Venegas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Joshua ISD, we are highly acclaimed model of educational excellence.
Very good job.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna jump into our recognitions first. So I'm gonna call down Ms. Stuckey, as she's got a fantastic group of students that she wants to recognize tonight.
So we are very proud to recognize our Joshua L. Special Olympics Bowling Team. The team competed in ULETS on October 30th and 31st and brought home some great hardware. This year, we took 30 athletes and partners, which is a huge increase from last year when we took 11. So we have really grown. So I want to say thank you to all of our families and our coaches for all of your hard work. And so athletes, if you were enjoying this tonight, please raise your hand when I call your name and show off your medal, okay? So we have Gabe Correa, who won silver. Cisco Aguirre, who won gold. Gavin Baker with gold. Valerie Munoz, gold. Jasmine Perez, silver. Evan Bottor, bronze. Zachary Smith, bronze. Cade Johnson, silver. Jayden Camarena, gold. And then we have doubles that we competed in this year as well. So Brian Luze and Jonathan Trout brought home the gold. Kayden Anderson Strout and Ryland Morrow brought home silver. Adrian Collins and Ethan Spratley brought home bronze. Lexie Mons and Lizette Torres brought silver. Avery Johnson and Elizabeth Taylor brought home silver as well. Also had another opportunity that our students with special needs can partner with Genet students in what's called Unified Champion Event. So we had some Unified Doubles events this year with Sidney Lamar and Presley Nugent bringing home gold. Jordan Easteth and Erin Jones brought home gold. Jordan Patterson and Jackson Spratley brought home silver. Maya Di Tomaso and Caleb Roterman brought home bronze. I could not have done this without the great support from all of our coaches and our volunteers. So this Nicole Di Tomaso, Kate McGeady. You guys, we had Rebecca Coe, Jamie Johnson, who's out there. Brad Spratley, who's out there. And we have Laura Luze over there. Deborah Baxley, Teri Ann Perez, Selena Nugent, Wendy King. Belmar Tiness, Keely Bond, and Victoria Bardow. Last, so we also just want to give a shout out to the Cleveland Penn Center Bowling Alley. They supported us again this season and allowed us to come every Wednesday and bowl for free. And I think a lot of our families were able to even go other evenings and bowl. And they were just very welcoming, supported us, and just continue to be our champions. And so thank you to them. Stacy, Martina, and Morgan from Cleveland Penn Center. And Morgan is a student at JIS. So thank you and great job, you guys. So get together to take a picture. We are starting basketball season in January. We'll have practices on Wednesdays after school for seven Wednesdays. And then we will compete at the end of February and the first weekend in March. So we're gonna be adding our littles to that as well, so we're very excited this year. Okay, big smiles, guys. Okay, Ms. Coe. So we also want to welcome our 18-plus services team, led by Ms. Rebecca Coe and Zarcaras Wendy King and Becca Brown. And she has brought some of our students here tonight and offered some great decorations. So go ahead and tell us. Can we play it first or you want to talk about it?
Um, we'll talk about it first. Okay, so I'm Rebecca Coe and this is Wendy King and Becca Brown. And we provide 18-plus adult transition services for students 18 to 22 in our district. And we brought two of our team members here tonight, Gordon and Fred. And they worked really hard at our work-based learning project business. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about that and then we've made a commercial for you to watch. So Balloon Way Plus was established in May 2023 through a work-based learning grant from Texas A&amp;M's Center on Disability and Development. This initiative operated by the Joshua ISD 18-plus Adult Transition Services is a work-based learning project focused on creating and selling personalized balloon grams, balloon centerpieces, and owl spirit grams. Balloon Way Plus is a self-sustaining business that has shown steady growth. So far, we have created centerpieces for various events, including Joshua ISD athlete signings, the JIS employee banquet, the JHS soccer banquet, the JHS UCS leadership banquet, and an event at the Region 11 Educational Service Center. Additionally, we have delivered personalized balloon grams to staff and students throughout the district. Balloon Way Plus continues to expand, providing even more opportunities for our students to explore a variety of employment skills. And we left some nizzus cards on this table over here with a QR code. So if you would like to order, it's there. Enjoy our commercial.
Balloon Way Plus is a work-based learning project. Balloon Way Plus is an opportunity for our 18-plus team to practice employment skills. Our team can create custom centerpieces for any event. We provide centerpieces for banquets, athletic signings, and even a Region 11 conference. Is it your teacher bestie's birthday coming up? We will create the perfect balloon arrangement. And delivery is included to all JIS campuses. You can order a balloon gram to say thank you or congratulations. Brighten someone's day with some owl spirit. The 18-plus team also offers a delivery service for special education services throughout the district. Staff members at the ninth grade campus can order Owl Dash delivery every Friday. Once a month, we offer Owl Dash services to staff at the administration building. Check out our website to find out Owl Dash is coming to you. Follow us on Facebook or scan the QR code for more information and order your balloon gram today.
At this time, we're bringing into our public team 2024 Owl School of Arts raiding.
Good evening, Mr. Cox and the besties. So today, I'm here to present the, um, our first greeting and also for the public hearing. These are, so the first... So the first is Texas School Financial Accountability Rating System. And the goal is to achieve financial quality performance and management of our finances. And it was most recently invented in 2013. It added some financial solvency indicators. And also then it directed a commissioner to evaluate the system for three years. A lot of, so the reporting requirements are to prepare a financial management report. And so it should include how we were rated, our performance for this year, and then comparing it to the previous year's indicators. And it also requires certain disclosures of transactions that were connected by the board and superintendent. And then also hold a public hearing to give individuals an opportunity to comment on this report. The first indicators, a lot of that information is tied to what we submit through PEMS. So our Public Education Information Management System. So there we have various PEMS submissions throughout the year. And one of them includes our financial audit. So a lot of this data is from that information and then also what's on our financials. So for this year's rating, so it's our 2023-24 rating. This is actually based on 22-23 fiscal year data. There are 21 indicators. The first four are, we call them critical indicators. And then their next nine will be your solvency indicators, some financial competency indicators. And only 19 of the indicators were actually scored for this year. Two of them were not evaluated and, um, which were 10 and 15, which were both forward expected as well. So once you have those indicators and their scores, it depends on how many points you get. And this is the ranking of the scores. So 90 through 100 isn't A. Indeed, 89 is a B. 70, 79 is a C. And less than 69 are lessons of past success. The school district will also receive an F if it fails any of the critical indicators looking for or if the data were not submitted on time. So, sorry, so the first critical, the first four indicators is if our financial report was submitted to the TEA within 30 days. Oh, in November 27th for fiscal year June and then also January, I suppose I said January for September year. So they say yes. Was there non-modified opinion? It's yes. Was the school district in compliance with the terms of all their agreements? Yes. And did you make any payments to TRS, WCC, IRS, and other governmental agencies? And those are a yes. The next ones are solvency. So the first one is, again, these ones are all calculated through what's submitted on our financial statements. Is if the note in the position is greater than zero, it was, it's passed. Number six is if the average change in our fund balance for the past, for three years is less than a 25% decrease, which it was, it was only a 3.7% decrease for the three-year average change. And then if not, then the second piece of this indicator would be if our fund balance exceeded 75 days of expenditures, which I just had it through when our calculation was. Number seven is how many days of cash on hand in current investments in general fund do we have? We did this, this did lower from the previous year, from 10 points to 6 points because of that 62 days. So that 62 days. Number eight is a measure of source to current ratio, current assets to current liabilities. We've got sufficient to cover our debt. This point actually increased from the previous year because our ratio increased. Number nine, if our general fund revenue exceeded our expenditures, which it did not. So then the second part of the indicator was, was the school district's number of days of cash on hand greater than 60 days, which it was, it's 62, so we got the full 10 points on this one. Number 10, if we averaged less than a 10% variance when comparing budgeted revenue to actual revenues for the last three years. So this actually was not scored by TEA. A lot of it is, you think for the past, because this is an average of three years. So this still includes some COVID years, and so this was excluded. Number 11, ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets. Sufficient to support long-term solvency. Our points stayed the same. Number 12, what is the correlation between future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value? This actually, this did go up. Number 13, what's the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold ratio? So our threshold is for, is based on your ADA. So we're at less than 6,000, which gave us 10 points for this, this ratio. And then did the school district not have a 15% decline in students to staff ratio over three years? But if the student enrollment did not decrease, then the school district will automatically pass this indicator and our student enrollment has been increasing. 15 is the school district's ADA within a lot of range of the biennial people projection submitted to PDA. This actually was, also was not evaluated because, again, because mostly because of COVID and how those projections were submitted from two years ago. So 16, so comparison of PEMS to the financial report. So it's two separate submissions that we do. Those two submissions were within each other, which they were. 17 is if we had any material weaknesses in internal controls. And we did not, so this ceiling was passed. 18, did the auditor indicate that annual financial report free of maintenance systems are materially non-compliant? Which they did not, so we got the full 10 points. And then 19, we posted all required financial information, which we have. Pointy, did the school district's administrative school board members discuss changes and impact to local, state, and federal funding within a hundred point range before the district adopted its budget? This is part of our budget development and adoption process. And then the last one is actually a new indicator for this year, which is if we had received an adjusted repayment schedule from the state, which we did. So in total, we scored a total of ADA, answered yes to all critical indicators. And so we have a B rating above standard achievement, which is similar to the previous year. So now we'll move on to the additional reporting requirements. One of them is having the superintendent's contract available on our website, which it is. So I've included a link here. Another one is a summary schedule of expenditures paid on behalf and/or reimbursements received by the superintendent board members. So in the, this is a change from the past. Before it was just reimbursements that were done. But code actually states that this would be what is paid on behalf of board members and the superintendent for mostly travel. So again, this was for 22-23 school year. So, and these were based on what was in our financial system. Another one is if a superintendent received any compensation from outside entities for professional consulting of the personal services. This was personally reported to us by the individuals that were in the superintendent during that fiscal year. And then a summary schedule of any, by superintendent board members, if you received any gifts. Again, this was also disclosed to us individually. And then the last one is any business transactions with the school district for the board members at that. That concludes my presentation. That piece of the public brief.
Okay, quick. Thank you very much. At this time, we're welcoming to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so during our board workshop, we were reviewing the enrollment, the attendance report, the ADA report, child nutrition report, private tax collection, monthly financial reports, monthly year-to-date status of special revenue funds, the check write-off charge, the police department report, our JIS calendar events. And right now, we'll have our campus presentation with this Caddo Grove Elementary.
So before I start with the video, for those of you that I have not had a chance to meet, my name is Fabi Adello. I am the principal at Caddo Grove. I have to mention that this is my first year to serve in this role. Very happy to do so. Along my sidekick, partner in crime, is Ms. Patty Jones, who is the most amazing vice principal. I could not survive without her. And so going through this process, knowing that we are supposed to highlight something of celebration on a campus, and I've sat on the audience side of this many times, I did not realize how difficult it is to decide on that one thing. So thinking about what has taken place at Caddo since August until today, you know, came to mind as far as a book vending machine. We had a grand opening with that. We had a science night. We had our Veterans Walk of Honor. And what was constant in every single one of these events was student council. And so it was very easy, once I made that connection, in highlighting our student council. I'm gonna give you a little bit of a narrative as to what you're going to see because this will be the visual piece. My goal in setting this up for you to highlight what they have done. And I say they, Mateo, Setio, and Ryland, if you don't mind just standing up. So then this way, they were chosen this evening to lead YETI. But these are what the leaders of Caddo look like, and they have done an amazing job. So this evening, the visual piece is almost a timeline of things that they have done just to support Caddo. And so I'm going to let the timeline start and hopefully this will work. And because it meant so much to me, I know that the letter was there from one of the veterans that attended that event. But I do want, I'm sorry, I'd like to talk. I'm gonna add just a little bit of time because this was a letter that was sent on behalf of Mr. Howard. And so for those of you that didn't get a chance to read all of it, it states, Ms. Adello, I wanted to acknowledge just how much Veterans Day school parade meant this morning to me personally. I thoroughly enjoyed meeting you and your staff this morning, and I wanted to send my gratitude to Ms. Roterman for spearheading organizing this, organizing this event. As veterans, we volunteered to serve our nation without the need to be recognized. But events like today do matter in reinforcing our decision to serve our great country. Additionally, I think my wife Bard enjoyed walking right beside me on this parade as well. And to be honest, she and other dependents are often left behind. And I feel they have more of a difficult job in ensuring our families are taken care of in our absence. My father was an Army veteran and school administrator in Castleberry ISD and a proud patriot. I'm so grateful to see Joshua schools and in particular, Caddo Grove Elementary, understand the importance of educating our youth and exposing them to the patriotism and love of our country at an early age. our country at an early age. This was an event that was in place before Patty and I stepped into our roles, and this is an event that I hope we continue with. And every one of these events that you saw highlighted has been successful because of our students, the sponsors, and the parents that pick them up every Thursday at 4:30, um, when they need, on a weekly basis. So that is one of the great things that is taking place at Cato Grove. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, bring us to the public forum portion of the board meeting. The board encouraged comments from citizens of the district or employees unwilling to speak either as individuals or as a representative of a group who may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education can be no longer than three minutes. And we've got one signed up, Mr. Michael McCorkle. You want to come up and stand in the front? I usually have a podium up there.
That's all right. Good evening, board. My name is Mike McCorkle. Um, I'm going to be short, sweet, and simple this evening. Uh, I'm asking that I'll cast your votes for Central Appraisal District Board this evening for Dwayne Goulding, John Wood, Jim Cockrell, Brandon Potts. We ask for your sincere deliberate consideration for these votes this evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving into the subjects. Subject A, Consider Consent for Gen. Idols.
Okay, uh, so within our consent of gen. idols, we've got our minutes from our previous board meeting on October 16th, uh, of no budget amendments. And we do have a few purchases over 50,000 that Ms. Warren reviewed during our board budget workshop, and those are related to food service and then off to working compensation programs. So my recommendation would be to approve the consent.
Can I make a motion? We approve the consent of gen. idols as discussed.
Motion by Mr. Root, I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven no. Subject B, Consider Resolution Regarding Review of Investment Policy and Strategy.
Okay, so the Public Funds Investment Act requires, uh, the board trustees to review the district's investment policy and investment strategies no less than annually. Uh, and this are in regards to policy C D A legal and C D A local. And so the resolution, you guys would be approving a resolution that states that it's reviewed, the investment policy, investment strategies, um, for the district. And so my recommendation would be to approve that resolution regarding review of investment policies and strategy, excuse me.
Your motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution on subject B.
Motion by Mr. Kevin Lee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunter. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Subject C. Consider List of Qualified Brokers Authorized to Engage in Investment Transactions with the District.
Okay, same thing along the lines here. Public Funds Investment Act requires that our board trustees to at least annually review, revise, and adopt the list of qualified brokers that are authorized to engage in investment transactions with the district. Um, you guys can see that list right there. And so my recommendation would be to approve the list of qualified brokers authorized to engage in investment transactions with the district.
Your motion.
Make a motion. We approve subject C as stated.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Carter, your second. By Mr. Root. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Subject D, Consider Resolution Regarding Approval of Independent Sources of Investment Training.
Okay, so along the same lines, Public Fund Investment Act requires the investment officers to attend an investment training session, uh, from an independent source approved by the board trustees within 12 months or within taking office, assuming those duties do not last than a two-year period. And so the investment officers of the district have to receive their training within that two, two-year period. And so my recommendation would be to approve the resolution regarding approval of independent sources of investment training.
Your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve subject D as stated.
Motion by.
Second.
Second by Ms. Root. Any other questions or thoughts? All favor? Subject B, Consider Participation in Region 10 Education Service Center Multi-Region Purchasing Core 24, 2025, 2026.
So you guys do this annually every year. Our food service director utilizes this purchasing cooperative, uh, so that we can have savings on commercial food items, not food items, and U S D A commodity processed items. And this allows us to purchase in bulk or by volume and allows us to save significant money rather than going out and bidding those items seamlessly. So my recommendation would be to approve Region 10 E S E M R P C Interlocal Agreement.
Your motion.
I make a motion. We approve the Region 10 E S E M R P C Interlocal Agreement.
Motion by Ms. Root, right here, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Subject F, Consider Resolution Affirming the Casting of Votes for Election of the 2025, 2026 Central Appraisal District of Johnson County Order Correct.
Okay, so Joshua I S D, uh, as a taxing unit in the Central Appraisal District of Johnson County, is entitled to 328 votes. There are eight candidates listed. Um, you may cast all votes for one candidate or divide them up to two or more. The candidates are James Cockrell, Caesar Diaz, Benjamin Bruce Gibson, Dwayne Goulding, Amy Lingo, Lauren Paye, Brandon Potts, and John Wood. Good.
Your motion.
I make a motion. Do you want all of them at once? My mind.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we allot 164 of our votes to James Cockrell. We allot 82 of our votes to Dwayne Goulding, and that we allot 82 to Benjamin Gibson.
Okay. Right here, second.
Second.
Good motion by Ms. Wilson, second by Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven up. Okay. Subject D, Consider Joshua I S D Public Information Request Non-Business Calendar Dates for 2025.
Okay, so this was an adjustment back in 20, uh, 2023, House Bill 3033 changed how governmental agencies count their non-business days. Uh, specifically, there can be no more than 10 designated non-business days each calendar year outside of Saturdays and Sundays and national and state holidays. Um, those are defined as when a governmental body's administrative offices are closed or operating within, with minimum staff. And so those dates are listed for you in regards to our public information request. And so my recommendation is to approve the P I, P I R calendar date for 2025. Good.
Your motion.
Make a motion. We approve the P I R calendar dates for 2025 as recommended.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cody Lee, seconded by, uh, Mr. Burton. Mr. Burton. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven up. Subject G, Consider Approval of Participation in the Short-Term Class Provided by the Texas School for the Blind and Visually Impaired.
Okay, so we have one non-trade student who's participated in Article 1, uh, provided by the Texas School for Blind and Visually Impaired. Um, three times throughout the year, the student must go in person to T S B V I in Austin. Those dates are October 27th through November 1st, January 6th through the 10th, and April 13th through the 17th of 2025. And so for that student, if he considers in attendance, um, the student must have the local school board approval to participate in the short-term class provided by the Texas School for Blind and Visually Impaired. And so my recommendation is the board approve participation in short-term class provided by the Texas School for Blind and Visually Impaired and excuse those travel days to and from the short-term course for compulsory attendance purposes.
I made a motion. We approve the participation in the short-term class provided by the Texas School for the Blind and Visually Impaired, the T S B V I, and excuse travel days to and from the short-term course for the compulsory attendance purposes.
Motion by Ms. Root, right here, second.
Second.
Second by, uh, that. Is there any further discussion or question? All favor? Seven up. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, at this time, the board will convene in closed session to discuss items authorized by Texas Department of Education. I think we're in closed session. I have about one, I want to see my little one, we've got about one on the three little pages. Record session is eight. Well, here, here is record session, Mr. Harrison.
Yeah, so I'd like to recommend Lisa Baugh for the coordinator of unfortunate purchase position for the transition.
Okay, your motion.
I'll make a. Nene can do it, I'll second. She second. She second one more here?
Yeah. Y'all are fast.
Sherry motion.
Oh.
Nene Wilson made the motion. I had a second for Mr. Kevin Lee. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven up. Can you, can you think it?
Yes, I make a recommendation that, uh, we award 30 days of catastrophic leave to employee lawyers now.
Good. Your motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Root, your second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kevin Lee.
Corey.
Corey.
Corey Lee. And, uh, any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven up.
Just one other thing for adjournment, including the staff current remunations.
Okay.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Root, your second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor? Seven up.